The Topeka City Council Meeting will come to order. Please rise as you are able for the invocation. Give your attention to Councilwoman Hiller to introduce the invocation and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. As most of you know, we had a major change in District 1 in central Topeka in July, and that was when the Central Congregational Church gave up their home of over 100 years, the historic home of Dr. Charles Sheldon and in his steps, and chose to move on and preserve their ministry in a different way. So this evening, I want to welcome the new pastor and his assistant to give the invocation this evening. The new church, our new neighbor, is El Shaddai Templo de Alabanza. They are a Pentecostal church with a congregation of 350 to 400. They've been around in Topeka for eight years on Southeast 15th Street and another eight years before that in a small church in North Topeka. So today, they're our neighbors at 1248 Buchanan. They have services on Sunday, prayers services on Fridays, and so on. This evening, our invocation is from Pastor Alberto Espinoza, assisted by Abraham Cortez.
Gracias por la invitación.
Thank you for the invitation.
Es un honor estar aquí entre ustedes.
It's an honor to be here with you.
Y es una bendición muy grande para mí.
And it's a great blessing as well.
No, it doesn't.
And I'm going to ask you to interrupt, to please speak into the mic and loudly so we can be sure to hear.
Y le doy las gracias nuevamente.
And I thank you once again.
Voy a hacer una oración.
And I will do the prayer.
Con todo mi corazón.
With all my heart.
Y con todo el anhelo.
And all the desire.
Que Dios le siga bendiciendo.
That God can continue to bless you.
Como está hoy lo ha hecho.
The same way that He has done so up to this point.
Salmo 34, versículo 7.
Psalm 34, verse 7.
El ángel de Jehová campa alrededor de los que le temen.
The angel of the Lord is around those who fear Him.
Y los defiende.
And defends them.
Amado Dios y Padre Ter.
Beloved Father.
Vengo adelante y te sayo.
I come before you, God.
Agradeciéndote esta oportunidad.
Thanking you for the opportunity.
Orando por estos hombres y estas mujeres.
Praying for these men and women that are here today.
Que luchan diariamente en sus corazones.
That fight daily in their hearts.
Para hacer buenas decisiones.
To make the right decisions.
Para esta ciudad.
For this city.
Y para todos aquellos que se benefician de ella.
And for all of those who benefit from it.
Yo te ruego, mi Dios amado.
I beg you, God.
Que tú envíes sabiduría a sus corazones.
That you send wisdom into their hearts.
Salud a sus cuerpos físicos.
Health into their bodies.
Paciencia en toda tribulación.
Patience in all tribulation.
Y fuerzas de lo alto para que ellos sigan adelante.
And the strength from above so they can continue on.
Te ruego por cada uno de estos hombres sabios.
I ask for these men and women for wisdom.
Para que sigas ayudando sus vidas.
And that you may be helping their lives.
Te pido por esta ciudad.
I ask for the city.
Que te necesita tanto.
Which needs you.
Por todos aquellos que buscan de ti.
All of those who are looking and seeking you.
Que tú te hagas manifiestos a ellos.
That you may show yourself to them.
Y que le hagas saber que hay uno.
And let them know that there is one.
Que es el todopoderoso.
Who is the Almighty.
Y bendice esta ciudad.
I ask for your blessing towards this city.
Y que siempre haya un corazón dispuesto a escuchar tu palabra desde lo alto, tu voz desde lo alto.
I ask that there will always be a heart who'd be willing to hear your voice from above.
Cuando más sienta la necesidad, Señor, de una idea o de una palabra para ayudar a esta ciudad.
When necessity arises.
Que tú tenga la misericordia de ponerla en sus corazones.
I ask for your mercy to show them the way.
Te lo pido.
I ask you this.
En el nombre poderoso.
In the powerful name.
De tu hijo amado.
Of your beloved son.
Cristo Jesús.
Jesus Christ.
Amén.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Espinoza, and we wish you well with your new parish and its location. Tonight, we have the opportunity to celebrate some of the outstanding people that are a part of Washburn Tech. I think we all are aware how fantastically this school has grown, played such a significant role in our community, providing an important facet of education that is just expanding, and it is something that we can be so totally proud of. I'm going to have some young people, if you want to come up here and join me. Yes. Actually, there is a national competition each year. It's called Skills USA Championships. It's considered the Olympic career and technical education in the country, and it features 100 different occupations, 100 competitions in various occupations and leadership skill areas. More than 40 Washburn Tech students competed in Skills USA National Competition in Louisville, Kentucky. They first go through state rounds, and if they receive a gold medal, then they go to the national level. And out of the 6,000 who participated at the national level, Washburn Tech placed more than 29 students in the top 10 of their respective contests and 32 students in the top 15. And some of these are here today, and we think it's important that we recognize them and show the entire community what Washburn Tech is doing. With us also over here is Dr. Farley, president of Washburn University, Dean Clark Koco, dean of the Washburn Tech, Dr. Clay Contetrow, associate dean of instruction for Washburn Tech, and David Price Water, the Skills USA advisor and Washburn Tech instructor. Now, I'm going to introduce and indicate the level, the achievement that was made. First is Lucas Barnes, and Lucas placed ninth overall in related technical math competition. That's ninth in the nation. That's pretty good. Jordan Brinker placed eighth overall in automotive refinishing technology competition, eighth in the country. This is Stacy Browers. Browers, okay. She placed sixth nationally in the Skills USA Nationals in Health Knowledge Bowl Competition. Barbara, no, Barbara Evans. She placed fourth overall in Technical Computer Applications. Very good. This is Narada Fenton-Millis, placed seventh nationally in the pen design competition.
Graphics Communication?
We got the wrong one. Did someone have pen design competition?
Last year.
Last year. Okay, well, we'll check this out and we'll make a new one. Congratulations. Say it again, what you thought and your award was in?
Graphics Communication.
Okay, great. Jonathan Kuizer placed first in the Community Service Competition. Congratulations. Grace, is that, okay. She placed fourth nationally in Prepared Speech Competition. Ben. My name is in the alphabet, so I was always last also. Wyatt Troop placed fourth nationally in Quiz Bowl Competition. Fantastic. Dr. Farley, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to each one of you and to several others who are not here with us tonight and for the entire campus that is doing these kinds of great things on a daily basis. And when you look at these folks, you're looking at the future of our community because the skills that they have or that they will learn while they're at Washburn Tech is what's going to attract jobs to Topeka and to make this a vibrant community with a great quality of life. And how could it be anything other than a great quality of life when you have folks like this that have achieved so much already, and we're looking for more from you? Congratulations to each one of you. Thank you, council members, and thank you, Mayor.
All right. Drop the mic. That completes the presentations. We will proceed then with the roll call.
Mayor Walcott.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Claire.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
De La Isla.
Here.
Jensen.
Present.
Schwartz.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
And Harmon.
There are no additions or deletions to the agenda, and at this time, there are no executive sessions, so we will continue with the appointments.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Dawn Moses to the City of Topeka ADA Advisory Council for a term ending October 2, 2019. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Teresa Packer to the City of Topeka ADA Advisory Council for a term ending October 2, 2019. C is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Shawn Kimball to the Shawnee County Community Corrections Advisory Board to fill an unexpired term and a full term expiring September 6, 2019. D is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Joel Cromwell to the Shawnee County Community Corrections Advisory Board for a term ending November 30, 2019. And E is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Rick Stones to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board for a term ending September 6, 2019.
Okay, those are the appointments, and your pleasure. Deputy Mayor Cohen moves to approve, and Councilwoman Schwartz seconds. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the appointments are approved. I'd like to introduce the two new appointees that are, and they are here this evening. First is Officer Shawn Kimball. If you would like to come forward a bit, he is being appointed to the Shawnee County Community Corrections Advisory Board and a police officer. He's been active in the crisis intervention team. He's been involved in the mental health issues, working with lay-in and all within the police department. And as you know, county employees cannot be on city boards. This is a state board that we appoint to, so we can have a city employee's member. And also then Rick Stones, if you would stand. He's an engineer at Bartlett &amp; West, and his specialty is in the sustainability area and being appointed to the Sustainability Advisory Council. Thank you very much for your service. We'll proceed then with the consent agenda.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Jeff Cohen granting Christ the King Catholic Church an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at seat concerning those prohibitions. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Jeff Cohen approving a special event known as the Rome Sweet Home Festival for Christ the King Catholic Church. C are minutes of the special meetings of August 11, 2017, and August 22, 2017, and the regular meeting of August 15, 2017. And there is one cereal malt beverage license for 29th Street Gas &amp; Shop, and staff is recommending approval.
Right, as a consent agenda, and your pleasure. Deputy Mayor Cohen moves to approve. Councilmember De La Isla, seconds. There's no discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. What's your name?
We have 10 yes.
Ten having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved. Proceed to the action items. A, an ordinance on real estate liens.
A is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber imposing a real estate lien pursuant to KSA 12808C upon certain lots and pieces of ground in Shawnee County, Kansas to pay the cost for utility services where such payments to the city have not been made due to neglect, failure, or refusal to pay.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is an item which we bring for consideration by the body on a yearly basis, and if approved, what will happen is liens will be placed against these property in the county office. A lot of these properties are outside of the city limits, but all of them have one thing in common, and that is they all have a delinquent city service of one kind or another, whether it's water, wastewater, fire line services. And for one reason or another, we're not able to collect on these, so we ask you to help us place a lien on the property. I would say that one unique thing about the list this year is that there are some apartment complexes on there. These are apartment complexes where we've made more than a good faith effort to try to collect water bills from them. They are apartment complexes that collect their utilities from their residents as part of the bill but have yet to pass those payments on to the city, particularly the embassy apartments. We've made numerous good faith efforts to work with them over the last 18 months or so, and we don't want to shut off service to the residents because the residents have paid their bill, but their owners have not. And so this is, this is a hammer that we have at this point. As always, we have a new and updated list in front of you because once that list gets published, some folks do come in and take care of their bill, and so you will see an updated ordinance in front of you tonight. And with that, I'd stand for questions.
Okay, are there questions on this? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just kind of went through the list. How does Dillon's company get on there? I have several questions. That's my first one. How does Dillon's company get on there?
It's probably because they didn't pay their bill, their water bill.
And I understand that, Mayor, but I'm just saying, they're a company, though. I mean, and I understand even with interim city manager, but sometimes if we shut that bill off, and the residents are complaining, that'll force them to pay a bill. I don't want to see residents go without water either, but that was just one of my, one of my questions. It's a company. Why can't we turn it off? I mean...
I believe that in this case, the Dillon's property has failed to pay their stormwater, their stormwater fee.
And that's where I was getting that because I know, there's another gentleman on here, and I bet you he's been on here the 12 years I've been on here. I'm serious. So I'm glad Mr. Gerber said that it was an updated list because he's not paying his stormwater. So what do we do at that point because he doesn't, he doesn't need it? Or, I mean, what are the ramifications when they don't do that?
Yes, ma'am, and particularly with the failure to pay stormwater or for those individuals that are customers of a rural water district outside of the city that we provide city sewer service to, we don't have the hammer of disconnecting their water service to get them to pay. And that's why we have this avenue available to us, which is to go ahead and assess on the, on the real estate we find that by assessing, our collection rate is closer to 90%, whereas if we hire a third-party debt collector.
Right.
We only receive about 30%. I will point out that the Dillon's or Kroger Corporation was on the list last year as well, and that their corporate office did make a payment prior to the October 1st actual final deadline before that got assessed against the real property taxes. My hope would be we would see similar conduct on their part.
Okay, that was another, another one of my questions, Braxton. Thank you. October 1st. So who do they call? Because I have marked off about five people that I know will pay this that is on that list that I'm going to go home and call. So who, who do they call to make this right and to get this right?
They would need to call our customer service department, the 368-3111 number, and then once we have received the payment, then we will be the one to communicate with the county clerk to remove them from the list for the assessment. They're not to call the county clerk. The payment needs to come through us.
Okay, because these are not really small, I mean, large amounts. They're smaller amounts, so actually, there's another one I'm going to call. Okay. That's just a concern. So how do we go about contacting them? Do we just send a letter, a certified letter?
On the residential accounts, yes, we do send a letter to them. On the commercial accounts, as Mr. Gerber had indicated, we go above and beyond to contact those individuals.
What's above and beyond, Braxton?
Well...
Break it down for me.
I could go through the details, but let's say a number of telephone calls to the corporate office to point out that they are delinquent, asking for them for payment.
So do we do certified letter as well?
I believe so, but let me just verify.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I have the list in front of me. On one particular account...
Mr. Mayor, he cut him off.
Well, excuse me.
But can I hear him answer my question?
I think the city, the interim city manager has something to add that will probably help to answer your question.
Well, he cut him off. If you could, if I'd like to hear the rest of what I was saying.
I'm sorry. He looked to the back, and they, and yes, you do.
We do send certified mail to each and every person that's on that ordinance.
Including corporations?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
And do we, how many times do we send it? If it comes back, if it comes back as nobody signs for it, then what do we do?
I don't have the answer to that question right now.
If you could let me know, that'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You want to add something?
I think Braxton sufficiently answered that.
Councilwoman Claire.
I just see one on here, and I don't know why it's duplicated or if it is a duplication. The White Lake Center, it's like the same number, same amount, same address.
Yes, council member. I believe that the White Lakes has a delinquent stormwater fee for the entire, I think that's the big one, the 24,000. In addition, there are five fire service lines. That's why you see what appear to be duplicate entries, but they have five separate and distinct fire service lines, and each one of those would trigger its own account.
So if there's only two, it's 78889?
That's, that sounds correct for the fire service line.
Okay. What's a fire?
There are two listed under...
Like on page two?
Page two, under White Lakes. But then if you turn to page five, you'll see that there are a couple other entries for KDL Inc.
Right.
At 3600 Southwest Topeka Boulevard, which is White Lakes Mall. The 788 number, which obviously looks familiar to you, that's a fire service line. The 22371, the vast majority of that is stormwater, and there was one fire service line included in that.
What's a fire service line?
A fire service line is a dedicated line coming from the water main that does not pass through a water meter, and it basically goes to put water into the fire suppression system inside the commercial property.
Okay, thank you.
And we don't generally turn those off. That's why we, they're here.
No, I'm sure the fire chief would like to get up and add a comment on that.
Not that, but we don't.
But we don't turn those off.
That's one water line, or one water bill. We don't turn off their water. Are there other questions on this issue? Your pleasure. Councilwoman De La Isla moves to approve. Councilwoman Claire, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have 10 yes.
Ten having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Item B, resolution on the grant program.
B is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber approving the 2017 Neighborhood Event and Beautification Grant Program, Neighborhood Partnership Program, as recommended by the Neighborhood Partnership Program Grant Review Committee.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As you know, we have a Neighborhood Partnership Program which was created in the budget this year, and in early or mid 2017, there was one round of funding which benefited a number of neighborhoods across the city of Topeka. With there being some leftover funds, there was a second round of funding, and a committee comprised of a couple of community members and staff have gotten together and recommend, made two recommendations to the body for some additional funding in an amount of $4,900, $2,500 for Huntington condominiums HOA for their First Impressions Program, and then $2,400 for the Pot One Neighborhood Association for their Holiday Circles Display. At your place this evening is some additional information on both of those programs and what they will encompass, and either myself or Neighborhood Relations Director Han would be available for questions.
Are there questions on this, on the resolution, the grant program? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question on the, where it says the root system wall. What exactly is that? And what exactly is First Impressions? Is that just the name of what they named it to kind of beautify?
Councilwoman, the root, if you're, if you're asking about page five where it says root system will not impact utilities, is that your question? Just so I understand.
Yes.
So that, that's just a note from the condo association that is simply stating that the root system of the plant won't impact the utility system that's in the area.
Okay. So what exactly is your First Impressions? Is it, or is it the beautification around the building? Is that how they explained it?
I'll have Sasha come up, and she can give you better detail on that.
Good evening. Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Ortiz, you are exactly correct. I'll pull that up, the sheet that you're looking at here directly. So the Huntington condominiums homeowners association applied for some dollars to do beautification to what's basically the entryway to their neighborhood. So there would be landscaping, and they'd like to do trees, trees as well as bushes, in particular bushes and smaller plants around their sign that says Huntington condominiums. But yes, ma'am, trees and other landscaping materials. I'm not going to be able to get it. But at any rate, other landscaping materials around the entrance there at, I believe it's Lydia and Gate.
Okay, I think I know where that's at.
Yes, ma'am. Southwest Gage Boulevard and Lydia Avenue. So when you first come off of Gage there into their neighborhood, they'd like to place several trees specifically, and then there will be some, some smaller plants around their sign.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there other questions? Councilwoman Schwartz.
Move approval.
Okay, it's been moved to approve the resolution. Is there a second? Councilwoman Claire, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have 10 yes.
Ten having voted yes, the resolution is approved. We go to item C on the Transit Guest Tax Committee Report Resolution.
C is a resolution introduced by councilmember Elaine Schwartz, supporting the historic Jayhawk Theater Inc.'s request to reallocate transit guest tax spending and to amend the development agreement to reflect the reallocation and require approval of changes to the project scope.
And we go to the Transit Guest Tax Committee Chair, Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I want to recognize that Jeff Carson is here, and he contacted me directly about this grant that we have from the city to the Jayhawk Theater. And I just want to encourage, if our new city manager is watching, that we continue this practice to encourage the community stakeholders to contact the governing body members about changes to things that they're involved with. I know that that's one of the things that has changed in my tenure, and as I wind down my tenure, I just kind of wanted to bring this to the surface, that Jeff sent me an email first about, you know, we needed to, they needed, they wanted to change what they were spending their money on from the marquee to the architecture. And so at our TGT Committee meeting, we talked about this extensively, and Councilwoman Claire, I think, brought it up, that there were some issues about, you know, making changes to where TGT money goes and making sure that we, that it's always the governing body that has the input in this. And so I think Councilwoman Hiller will have a friendly amendment in this discussion. So what this does is basically allows the Jayhawk Theater to change where they're spending the $155,000 that they were going to spend on the marquee to architecture construction documents. And then... And then the second section just directs the city manager to facilitate that. And I think it's in section three that we'll have a friendly amendment. So I would like to move the adoption.
You move approval of the resolution.
Right, right.
And Deputy Mayor Cohen seconds. And we're going to then, you're going to refer to Councilwoman Hiller.
The friendly amendment would be that in the discussion, there was, there was discussion about the fact that the Exhibit A would need to be redone as part of fairly major changes that were proposed. There was also some discussion about the fact that the way the contract was written at first, it had to do with just small projects rather than using our funds as match for a major project. In the course of that discussion, the way it was left was that the city attorney's office would get that, would work with them and get the Exhibit A and any appropriate language in the contract amended, and that it would come to the council rather than be done off just by staff. So that was the way we understood that it was left in the committee. The minutes are silent to that issue. I went and looked at the videos again, questions about it. So the friendly amendment would be, rather than what the current language is in section C, which currently says the interim city manager is authorized to execute an amendment to the development agreement, instead it would say, staff will prepare and submit an amended agreement and Exhibit A to council for approval. I should say in offering that amendment that there was not an intent on the part of the committee that it, that it'd have to come back regularly. And that was, it was discussed, that the staff would have the authority to work with than the applicant to make changes along the way that were under that $100,000 threshold.
Okay, now, so you are moving to amend section C.
Friendly amendment, section C.
Okay, so you're considering it a friendly amendment.
That's...
You mean section three.
Section three.
Section three.
Section three of the resolution that we have in front of us.
Section three.
Sorry.
I think this should, I, I'm going to feel this should be an amendment rather than a friendly, friendly, I think we should perhaps, I think it, it's changing the, in a sense, a little bit more than, changing the tone a bit. Just to clarify, that way...
Well, just to clarify, this is what the committee wanted.
I see, okay.
It's not written as the way the committee wanted it, correct?
All right. The other committee members are...
Sandra Clare and Karen Hill.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Now I, now I get the big picture here.
Now you get the gist, yeah.
Thank you, all right. A friendly amendment from the committee.
Right.
We would say. All right. That's, okay, council, with that, we accept that as a friendly amendment. All right. So we have a motion to approve the resolution and a second with the friendly amendment. And that's, you agree with this friendly amendment? Okay, discussion. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, your honor. As a member of the board of the Jayhawk Theater, I will abstain.
All right, all right. Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Hiller, would you mind just repeating that one more time, please?
Sure. Staff will prepare and submit an amended agreement and Exhibit A to council for approval. That could probably be better worded.
And that is for anything, a change of an excess of 100,000? That's what, or is it, is this getting into all amendments, all changes?
It would only be what was in...
Okay.
There's going to be new language in there that says that we would, that anything, any changes in excess of 100,000 would have to come to council.
Okay.
But the discussion at committee was that legal, because we didn't want to do it on the spot, would look through the discussion, there was consensus in the discussion, that legal would go through and get both the contract and the Exhibit A amended appropriately based on the committee's work.
Okay.
And bring it back, so.
Okay, and I just always, you know, hesitant when we move, change language on the...
Understood.
And so I'm going to ask the legal, is this, you feel comfortable with it?
Yes, Mary's indicating yes. She was in the TGT committee and...
Okay, all right. Now, I've been the naysayer here, so any others, any discussion? Just wanted to make sure we're together.
That's okay.
Okay. No other discussion. We have a motion and a second with the, including the friendly amendment. All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have nine yes, with Mr. Jensen abstaining.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution is approved. We go to item D, ordinance.
D is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber concerning employees, the personnel code, departments created and established positions, amending, repealing, and renumbering several chapters in Title II, Administration and Personnel of the Topeka Municipal Code.
Okay, and I go to recognize the chairman of the Policy and Finance Committee, Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, before we spend any more time on this, some last minute questions came up just today on both of these issues.
This and the next.
Yes, sir.
This and the next.
So as the chairman of the committee, I would move to defer consideration of this item 6D and 6E to...
Let's just do one, we'll blow it separately.
Okay. So defer consideration of this item 6D to our October 17 council meeting so that we can address, see if some of these need another meeting, or perhaps they can just be addressed.
All right. Is there a second to this? Councilwoman DeLisla, seconds. Is there any discussion, questions, understanding? Where, since we're pulling this, and we're going to be back on the agenda October the 17th, if the committee wants to meet again, it can, or whatever is necessary to work it out.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
No discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
The second is...
Yeah, we're not ready.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Emerson? There we go.
Vote. You haven't voted.
All right, we have 10 yes.
Okay. 10 having voted yes, the item is deferred to October the 17th. Go to item E.
E is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber concerning the organization of the Utilities Department, adding new sections and amending and repealing several original sections of Title 13 Utilities of the Topeka Municipal Code.
And Chair of the Policy and Finance Committee, Councilman Emerson. I think we're going to hear something similar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For exactly the same reasons, I would also move to defer consideration of this item also to our October 17 council meeting.
Is there a second? Deputy Mayor Cohen, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the item is deferred to the October 17 meeting. We go to item F, resolution on setting a public hearing date.
F is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber, setting a public hearing to consider the advisability of establishing a community improvement district for the Wheatfield Village District at 29th and Southwest Fairlon Road and rescinding Resolution Number 8938.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As indicated by the clerk, if adopted, this resolution would serve two purposes. First, it would establish a public hearing date of October 3, 2017, for a community improvement district for the Wheatfield Project at 29th and Fairlon. And secondarily, it would repeal the previous resolution, which set the public hearing date, originally set the public hearing date for next week. The reason for this change is a request from the developer to move from a 1.5% CID sales tax to a 2% to help offset the cost of their project. That's the only thing we're doing tonight with this, is if adopted, again, it would move the public hearing date until October 3. Just as sort of a inside baseball, looking ahead to next week, you'll know that we have next week a public hearing for the TIF district and the project plan. Those, as you know, are separate items that the body will look at next week.
And that's public hearing?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
And action?
And action, potential action.
Potential action, yes, on those. So we're deferring the item on the CID?
That's correct.
That's all that it's doing?
To a date specific of October 3.
All right. Is there discussion, questions? Councilman Hiller?
Just a question, because I know that all sorts of people have been working very hard on this. I haven't been included in most of that. There are a lot of moving parts with the TIF, with various proposals that have changed since the very first time, changed the last time we got that, and then now it sounds like they're changing again. Is there going to be a time in advance, a time that we're going to get updated on what, where that proposal is and whether it's firm yet? I'm not comfortable taking action right after a hearing when things are still changing. So I just wondered what the sequence is going to look like.
Understood, Councilwoman, Mr. Mayor. It is a work in progress, and there are a lot of moving parts, and there are a lot of people working on it. Those statements are all accurate. We've promised you that we will get you a development agreement ahead of when we'd like you to take action, and we still intend to keep that promise. We're working on it and trying to get something that both parties can agree on and that we can get in front of the body for their consideration. We're just not at that point yet. That's all, I mean, we're just not at that point.
I didn't think so.
But that will help answer some of those questions, I would think.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where did the 2% come in? Does that also include that in tonight's vote, from the 1.5 to the 2%? Because I kind of heard both there.
Councilwoman, Mr. Mayor, if approved tonight, would set a public hearing date to consider 2%. So all you're doing with this action is setting a public hearing date.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions? My pleasure. Councilwoman Clare, she moves to approve the ordinance. Councilwoman DeLisla, seconds. Any further discussion? Not all in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have nine yes, nine yes, Mr. Ortiz voting no.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution is approved. That completes the action items for this evening. We now go to the non-action items, and the first is a, on discussion, on setting another hearing date. Read the next item, item 7A.
It's a good idea. A is discussion to consider the advisability of establishing a community improvement district for the project at 240 Southeast 29th Street, and more specifically described herein.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Before Trent takes over the microphone, just some brief background on this property, which he'll get into in more detail, but we've had a request to establish a CID, Community Improvement District, for this property at 240 Southeast 29th. Most of you probably know it as the old Kmart on 29th Street. It sat vacant for a number of years, and when Trent and Pat came to us earlier this summer with the request, it was something we took very seriously because, obviously, an opportunity to revitalize a project in East Topeka that is set vacant for so long certainly pushed a lot of hot buttons for us, and so we were enthused to keep moving forward with both Pat and Trent. And they've graciously agreed to come tonight and give an overview of their project and answer any kind of questions you might have. So with that, I'll let Trent Overview take the mic.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, welcome.
Appreciate the opportunity. We're from kind of southern Iowa. We've done this, we usually do this in Missouri, Nebraska, Kansas. We've done four or five CIDs now, and it works good for this type of use that has a good co-tenancy that's already there. We'll keep the existing tenants and hopefully improve that facility quite a bit. We're asking, the total project cost is going to be around 3.1 million. The CID district will be about a third of that. We're asking for 1%. And the revenue generated off that will basically be from the co-tenancy that's already there. We feel like we have a fairly nice rendering for the building. Current projects that we've worked on are, there's a little bit more there. This one's a little bit further gone than most, and that's one of the reasons why you see a significant construction budget. But we feel it's a suitable use for this building. It'll be fairly low impact, and from our market study, it appears that there is a demand for storage in Topeka. As far as job generators, we do employ about five people, give or take. It's not a huge job generator, but it does fill a void as far as a vacancy in the community, and it's a very nice, clean product when it's done. A lot of communities, we go in, it's like, oh, it's storage. It's not our ideal use. We take it a little bit different. A lot of our projects, we consider Class A, we'll go through, they're nice, bright, clean. We basically tear everything down to the shell and start putting stuff back. There'll be a new facade put on, and we hope it looks like a new building when we're done, and it's, and we also hope there's future growth to that area. And hopefully, this will be one of the projects to kind of, to spur some new things in that district. Here's the existing facility. As you can see, I believe this building sat vacant for 10-plus years, and it's had an interesting use over the last 10 years, to say the least. But it is in need of repair. You've had a lot of vandalism, copper cutout, no AC, various holes in the roof. It just, it needs a lot of TLC, to say the least. Here's a rendering, kind of what we're proposing. We'll go through with the new roof. We'll cover up the existing Kmart with a new facade. There'll be some glass windows along the front, new metal paneling, and then a bunch of dummy doors, which kind of insinuate storage. This particular project will be a drive-through facility, so they'll actually pull inside, be able to unload underneath the roof, which is an added feature for us. And we figured, we find that the public likes that. I mean, it keeps the travel distances down to their units, and obviously, they'd be out of the elements. Here's kind of a side view, and these colors are a little brighter than we typically go with, but you can get an idea kind of what you'll be, what you'll be looking at. I am up for questions if you guys have anything for me.
Well, first, thank you very much for your interest in Topeka.
I appreciate it.
And for looking at this, and we, in all of our areas, we certainly appreciate development of any type, and what you're doing looks very good. I was going to ask, you plan to do, it shows some landscaping there, in the, as opposed to the, just a parking lot, and that's, you plan to do that?
Yeah, we'll add landscaping, we'll add signage, we'll redo the parking lot, add striping, LED lighting to the existing streetlights. I don't, I think there's only a handful that are currently working, but it will be nice, bright and clean, and it, I don't think we'd have a whole lot of opposition.
Yes, so are there questions then? Councilman Ortiz, this is in your district.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in southeast Topeka, and the two buildings to the end, if I look at this correctly, you will not be touching them, is that correct?
We do not own those.
Okay, so it's just the property in the yellow, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I did put in a complaint on the one that was kind of half demolished. I do see I went by there today, and they are in the process of tearing it down.
Tearing it down, absolutely, absolutely.
That's great.
Now, at one time, and I would have to try to pull my notes, good luck with that, but they wanted to make this a storage shed for antique vehicles.
Okay.
Are you familiar with that?
I'm not.
And it didn't go over very well with the residents in that area because they were concerned with the vandalism that it would bring to that property.
Sure.
So would this be climate control as well?
It's going to be 100% climate controlled. And I can touch base on the vandalism. We go above and beyond as far as security goes. We'll have lasers that go up every aisle in the evening. So if anybody walks through that building, you'll know within seconds. If anybody gets on the roof of that building, we'll know very, very quickly. And if anybody crosses in the back of that property that shouldn't be there, we will know about it. So we try to, to secure people's belongings as much as we possibly can. And we definitely take the precautions to do that. We'll have about 32 security cameras throughout that facility. So if there were something, we'd be able to capture that.
I don't know if it was because of the type of vehicles that they wanted to store there, that they were concerned with people trying to break in?
Sure.
And, you know, the vandalism? I'm not real sure, but I do remember that.
Yeah.
Also, you're going to renovate the whole building, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that would include the Harbor Freight and their building, or just the outer of their building?
We'll be doing the outside. I mean, with them being an existing tenant, I mean, we hope that they continue that inside. I know the Car Audio Place said that now that there's new ownership and they can, I guess, see the future, they're going to make an investment and kind of improve what they have. And been in contacts with Harbor Freight. And I think they're going to go through and do a full remodel on that once we get upgraded.
What about more tenants? Are you looking to have more tenants? Because, I mean, that's a huge, a huge building and you could, you could very well do that.
Sure.
So would you be looking at that as well?
Currently, I'm not going to be looking at that. There might be opportunity down the road. With the indoor storage, a lot of that square footage gets eaten up in hallways. We have a drive aisle. So about 15,000 to 20,000 of that usable space will be in hallways. So in order to make this work, we're going to have about 45,000 rentable feet, which we typically don't want to get under that. Or the, it's hard to afford a manager and full-time staff.
So, and my last question, by the way, Mr. Mayor. You're going to tear this all the way down to the bottom and build up, is that correct?
We're leaving the existing structure, but we'll take out all the demising walls inside, ceiling grids, redo the sprinkler system, new roof, new exterior paint. The facade on the front that you see will be all brand-new. And I guess it, it'll look like a brand-new building. So I like what we have there. It just, it'll be a lot of work to get it to what I like, so.
Because it's in bad shape.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Claire?
About how many units is that?
I think we're projecting right around 500.
Like, what's the average cost of a unit? I mean, I know there's different sizes, but...
It just varies. I mean, I would say a five-by-five might run from $40 up to a 10-by-20. I mean, you're probably looking at 150, 160.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is also, this is not my district, but on my side of town. And spent a lot of time in the old Kmart there. So I appreciate you guys being interested in improving that. I did have a question, though. On your application, and maybe this is a question for staff. Under financing and bonds, it says, "Do you request that the city issue special obligation bonds?" And you put potentially. And then, "Do you plan to use pay as you go?" And again, the answer was potentially. And this is Lee Hazza.
Yeah, finance, true.
Yep, thank you. What I would add is that the next steps after tonight, after we hear you all's questions, is to work with them on the development agreement. And we've discussed how, on that item, we might recommend in the development agreement that we would exclude that option for now. That's kind of a standard practice that we've been discussing with other districts, is that once we get to the agreement portion, we could discuss how to close that language, I would say, on a lot of initial applications. Developers like to leave that open-ended. And then with the development agreement, that's where we and you all and them come to agreements on how we want to state that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, welcome to Topeka.
I appreciate it.
You'll find we're a fabulous place to do business. I'm curious, this is just a massive, massive parking lot. And obviously, you won't need all of that. Do you have any plans to develop some of the frontage space in the future? Or at least cut out some of the asphalt, so?
Sure, I think there's some opportunity there. I know in other projects, we've done some, like, flex space, some office warehouse. Well, they'll have little offices in the front, warehouse in the back. I think that could be an opportunity. And there could possibly be some outlots that could be sold. But obviously, I mean, we'd have to have the right business to come in there to get that done. But that's definitely a possibility because there is a lot of space up there.
It's just, it's a massive ocean of asphalt. Do you have any intent to take any of the asphalt out in your initial design?
Currently, not. Like I said, it, right now, I mean, it's existing. We'll maintain it and it might be useful down the road.
Cool.
But you said there would be some landscaping.
Sure.
In terms of some of that would be, yes. Councilman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. This is exciting. I have a couple of questions. One, regarding where the revenue would come from to pay for this extra 1%, 1% sales tax. Did you say that the existing tenants would pay that?
It's going to be passed down to the existing customers. There's currently Harbor Freight and a Car Audio Place that we estimate four to five million in annual sales. And that's where that revenue would come out. And they would be able to, we would think, see an added benefit as far as the quality of the building and hopefully, an uptick in the sales as well.
Have you consulted with them? What do they think?
They're all for...
They are?
Yeah, they want...
Okay, we've been through this once before where people were promised that their rent wouldn't be raised and that they wouldn't suffer for that, and they did.
Well, we don't have the luxury to raise rent. So they have an existing lease for a while. And I've talked to both tenants and they, they're happy, all the improvements that we see.
And they're not concerned that the extra sales, 1% sales tax will drive any of their customers?
No, and we've done this in a handful of other districts. And we haven't seen any fluctuations as far as sales go.
Because it, I don't even know, on a rental unit, there's not sales tax, is there?
Not currently in Kansas.
Okay, so it would, it would have to be from those units?
Correct.
And the other question was, I couldn't tell from the drawing, where would people actually drive in? From the front or...
If you see that, kind of that existing deal we're building on the front?
Yeah.
On the right side of that?
That's the garage door open?
Yeah.
That's the access?
Yeah, there it is.
You can see right here, that will be, and there'll be a keypad access. And hours typically run, I think, 10:00 in the evening to 6:00 in the morning. It'll be closed and they'll have, enter their codes, come and go as they need. And it typically, it's a pretty low-impact business, so.
Okay, so then, people will exit the same?
They will exit at the back of the building.
Okay.
And then there'll be two security gates that will open up as they pull up and they'll be able to pull out into the parking lot.
Okay, so there will be two doors that vehicles can go through?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions, discussion? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Look forward to working with you.
I appreciate it, guys, thank you.
Now, that completes our discussion items for this evening. We go to announcements. First, we will have the reading of the preliminary agenda.
On September 12th, we will have one presentation, the Troy Scroggins Award Consent Agenda. We have one noise exception. For action items, we have a resolution for the Southeast 29th Community Improvement District. We'll set a public hearing for October 3rd. And then we will have the Wheatfield Village Project Plan Public Hearing. Discussions will include the Neighborhood Revitalization Program Renewal and the Downtown Parking Plan Development.
Thank you. Four announcements then, Mr. Endrum City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I have three announcements. First off, we still need volunteers. This is for everyone in the room's benefit. Volunteers for the annual bike and pedestrian counts at a number of locations around the city. We have openings from 5:00 to 7:00 on September 13th and noon to 2:00 on September 16th, which is a Saturday. And you can contact Taylor Ricketts, who handles that for the planning department, if you have an interest in doing that. Or probably, Councilwoman Hiller could probably give you some information as well. The traffic signal at 29th Engage, everyone probably saw the release today, but that will flash red this Friday from 8:30 to 12:30 in the morning. That's a busy intersection. 15, 20,000 cars a day go through there. So we're asking for everyone's patience and maybe assist us in taking an alternate route. It was damaged during an accident recently, so the signal needs to be replaced. And then, he's not here tonight, but if he's listening, congratulations to Dustin Coles. He works in utilities, specifically for WPC. And at the 2017 Kansas Water Environment Association Conference held this last week, he received the Water Environment Federation's William D. Hatfield Award, which is awarded annually for outstanding performance and professionalism in the operation of a wastewater treatment facility. So that's a mouthful, but congratulations, Dustin. And for others recognizing what we've seen in him as well.
Very good, thank you. That certainly should be recognized. Councilman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple. I hope I'm not getting ahead of anything, but I am very excited about the efforts that Major Cochran has taken on behalf of all of us. And that is in the reconstituting of what will be called the Hoarding Coalition. That organization was a collaborative, served for years, a collaborative effort amongst a number of organizations. The city's police department, the fire department, Valeo, social service people, people that hoard either items or pets in their homes that just have difficulty managing that part of their lives, that therefore, there is a fire danger, there is a danger of property being deteriorated, and most of all, them being harmed in some way. And so Major Cochran has taken the effort to reconstitute that coalition. There's been an inaugural meeting, they're reaching out to all the various partners. But if anyone has had those issues in their district and wasn't sure where to turn, we now already can get hold of Major Cochran to get people referred. Also, congratulations to the mayor and his wife on the honor they got from Civic Theater. That is really wonderful.
Thank you.
And you guys are wonderful community citizens. And other than that, Touch a Truck and the Pow-Wow and all the various events that were the last couple of weekends were blazing successes. Just a heads up, of course, for anybody to check Topeka 365 because this is the month for the art fairs, the food festivals, the chocolate festival. And everybody else can list all the specifics that you have in mind. But it's going to be a great month in Topeka. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Claire?
A couple of things. Thelma Allendorf wanted me to announce that on Saturday, September 16th, they're going to have the ninth annual hoedown on the Kansas Avenue New United Methodist Church's lawn. And it's at 1029 North Kansas Avenue from 4:00 to 6:30. There's free hot dogs, chips, cookies, pop, entertainment, children's games, door prizes, bring lawn chairs. Next thing I'd like to do is thank everyone in the community that donated to Sheepdog Impact Assistance for their cleanup trip to Houston. This community really came together and left donations out at the fire station for them. My kiddos did, was with the group that went to Houston. And I just wanted to say, the Sheepdog Impact Assistance nationally sent 450 volunteers, 1,700 pounds of non-perishable food, 850 cases of water. 250 people were they rescued, 22 properties cleared of trees, 49 homes cleared, and 1,600 meals cooked. My kiddos helped muck out houses. And the guy that they did, one of the houses they did, the guy said they saved him $20,000. It costs $20,000 to get your house mucked out, down to the studs. So I wish Houston well and all the volunteers that are there.
And congratulations on the arch over Seward Avenue. Neat. Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. I had a chance to go to Tiffany's memorial and it was really awesome. It was very touching. We will miss her. And hopefully, we'll do some memorabilia things for Tiffany. And also, I'm proud to announce that she will be laid to rest in my district in the Topeka Cemetery. And that, that just brought joy to my heart with all the other famous people there. So I don't know if you have anything to add, Brendan, but that was excellent. Touch a Truck was very, very awesome. I had a chance to go. There was only one thing missing, and that was Henderson Construction. And that's all I'm going to say.
And your rhetorical, Councilman Emerson?
No reply to that. But the big news in District 4 is, after a year of construction, the roundabout at 37th and California is open as of last Friday. And I want to thank Jason Peak and, obviously, our Public Works Director, Jeff Hunt, who's the project engineer on that. Randall DePrado with Bartlett West, who was the inspector out there. And last but certainly not least, Smithline Escaping, Jeremy Smithline. They did a fantastic job, really accommodated that neighborhood. It was very tough because that neighborhood, if you ever see it, is blocked by KTA on one side, the lake on the other. So it's a very challenging project. And they did, they did an incredible job. So thank you, gentlemen.
Councilwoman DeLees?
Thank you, Mayor Wolgas. I have a few things. First of all, I want to send my prayers and all of my love to all the individuals in Puerto Rico that are on the midst of Hurricane Irma. And it seems that it's not only going to ransack the Caribbean, but it's also heading towards Florida. So my prayers for everybody who is in the wake of that. Second, another sad thing, I am, I receive, all of us received an email from the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity today, sharing about some of the sad incidents that were happening in that neighborhood. I am very excited to hear that in one of our local neighborhoods, we're going to have three awesome Habitat for Homes. And the Habitat homeowners are nothing but the exemplifying of hard work. Having poverty issues does have nothing to do with crime or challenges. And the Habitat homeowners typically are such a blessing to the community. It was very sad to hear that on the same day that we had issues with Charlottesville, there were racial slurs written on those homes. And for anybody who wrote those racial slurs, I am telling them that the city of Topeka does not stand by that. We are a city of unity. We are a city in which poverty is not a marker of your dignity. I am excited for the fact that this neighborhood will now have three families that are willing to invest in that community. And I applaud the efforts of Habitat for Humanity in this community. Now to celebrations. I am very excited to hear that as Councilwoman Hiller made a statement with regards to the TPD being engaged in a really cool initiative, they have also reached out because TPD wants to be involved in Momentum 2022. If you do not know what Momentum 2022 is, it is the city of Topeka's and Shawnee County's strategy in order for us to grow in several key areas. I would highly encourage you to look up Momentum 2022. It's a great plan and there's always room for people who want to be engaged to make a community a better place. And finally, back to the TPD. We had the honor, Councilwoman Hiller and I, had the honor of attending the graduation, the 53rd graduation for the TPD. And I would like to congratulate Benjamin Bemis, Lucas Capes, Tony Grady, Brandon Parrish, Raymond Pickery, Stephanie Poyer, and Timatis Valina. It was an amazing event. It was, you know, heartwarming and it just almost brought tears to my eyes as they recited their oath. And to think that not only do we have seven new officers that are serving our community, but the fact that Chief Kramer made it a point of making sure that the community and the families also understood the responsibility that we have to our public officers as well, for us to take care of each other. So thank you very much for all of you, for your graduation, for the effort that you put forth. And congratulations to the TPD with your new people.
Thank you. Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. So as you all know, yesterday was the unofficial end of summer. So today is the unofficial beginning of fall. This is my favorite time of year because there is absolutely a ton of stuff to do in our community. This is the time of year where Topeka really shines with its activities, with its community building, with all of the things there are for families to get out and do. And I really want to encourage everyone to get out and do something you've never done before. If you've never been to the art show, go see the art show. If you haven't ever had chocolate on Kansas Avenue, give it a shot. There are a ton of things to do in this community this time of year. The weather is going to be phenomenal for most of them. Please get out and experience what our community is and what it's trying to become. It's a wonderful place to live, and this is a perfect time to see that. Invite a friend, have your family come in from out of town. It's going to be great. Have a great week, everybody. Have a great week, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Schwartz.
I'll be quick. I just wanted to share with Councilwoman Hiller that First Congregational Church moved to Temple Beth Shalom. So, we are having church on Sunday mornings at the synagogue, and they had a ice cream social that both congregations got together, so it's amazing what happens when people work together. And I didn't want to let Councilwoman Ortiz one-up me, so I wanted to say that the zoo is the happening place. If you didn't see him, they posted their camp cowabunga pictures today of things that are moving, and we're having a meeting with Kay's Garden at the zoo this Friday, and don't forget to put "Zubilee," which is September 23rd, on your calendars, so thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. September 14th, girls' night out at Fairlawn Plaza. I hear it's a great time. I haven't been, but the thing that touches me is that the money raised is going to the Ronald McDonald House, and if you guys don't know what that is, it's where parents can stay while their kids are in the hospital, and we stayed at the Kansas City Ronald McDonald House when our child was sick. So, we have a soft spot, and I knew that, you know, once life settles down, which it doesn't, a little bit, we were going to, we were going to try to take care of our house here, and so I volunteered for the advisory board, and our red shoe crew is the one who's putting this on, so if you guys get a chance, come out to girls' night out at Fairlawn Plaza, and this will be September 14th.
Okay. Is it, what's the time, is it during the day, the all-day, evening?
At night.
It's at night? Okay, you see, I haven't been there. I don't think about this.
It's at 5:00 to 7:30.
There you go. 5:00 to 7:30, got that. Okay, Councilman Harmon. I would only add that, again, as we certainly ponder what Houston is going through, and the other cities surrounding Houston, knowing that, what, how any city can handle these types of situations is unbelievable, so, and in a sense, we learn from one another, and we also certainly sympathize and support their efforts in any way that we can. Completes the announcements, we go to public comment. We have Jonathan Schum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the council. I'm here tonight representing Central Highland Park NIA. I'm the president of Central Highland Park. Most of you understand how important NIAs are to our community. Most of you understand that the volunteers that put in the time at the NIAs are some of the most active citizens of our community. Most of you are also aware of an issue that is facing the NIAs, where the funding for newsletters for the next, for the last four months of the year are cut off. We're told we're over budget, there's not money for the newsletters to go out. At Central Highland Park NIA, we represent 2,219 members of our community. Without that newsletter, it's hard to have a meeting. You can question the effectiveness of the newsletter, but you can't question the effectiveness of the NIAs, the ability of them to rally together, organize projects that sort, completes, and other things. We've met with the Department of Neighborhood Relations. They have offered to allow us to send out one postcard with the remainder dates, of the dates for the year. We understand the budget issues that face the Department of Neighborhood Relations, which is why we would come to you as a council and ask for you as a council to find the funding to allow the NIAs to complete the year with newsletter mailings. You've all had emails from Betty Phillips at Highcrest. You understand how important, and she can put it much more eloquently than I can, the newsletters are to the NIAs even existing and functioning. With that said, we ask you, on behalf of not only Central Highland Park, but the other NIAs across the community that are short on funds for those newsletters, to please show your appreciation for the volunteer, for the volunteers of those NIAs, and help us find a way to send out a newsletter at least monthly. The month of September is gone, so realistically, we're asking for October, November, and December, and it is my full belief that the council can come together and find a solution that will address it and respect the Department of Neighborhood Relations budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jonathan, thank you for bringing that to the table, because I, too, am confused. I know of an NIA that didn't send out very many, they've sent out postcards, they scaled back to postcards, and they were too notified that they're out of funding, so I asked the city manager if he could get me an explanation why. I also took to the city manager to look into TARC. TARC is very, very reasonable. I think some things can be done in the future, because this is an opportunity for us to really, we don't utilize our newsletters like we should. It goes out to almost every resident in the NIAs, and I think we need to do a better job about funding. I'm all for putting money in the streets, I really am, but when we start pulling fundings, and I don't know what money's pulled where, so I'm just, I'm speculating, but there's got to be a better way, or are we using somebody that's costing us outrageous? I'm not real happy with the person that we're using, and I don't know, I asked the city, the Antrim City Manager, when we were out there, if he would let me know when that contract was up, or he said he was going to check on it, and to date, I still haven't heard, but I'd like to know that, because I think we could use TARC and serve two entities that would do that. There's just some things that they do that I really disagree with, and I think, knowing the background and the history of that, that I think we could do a better job of what we do. So I thank you, and I, too, will be asking some questions. Thank you.
I'm sure we'll get more information on this. We'll find out more information, have information for us. Councilman Jensen.
Just a quick follow-up. Most of the neighborhoods I represent are not NIAs, and they don't have the option of getting their newsletters printed, and so we hand-deliver them on a monthly or quarterly basis, and I'm wondering, you know, that's such a great way to get out and actually meet the members of your neighborhood, I'm wondering why some of these NIAs can't just rally their volunteers and hand-deliver them. We've been doing it in the neighborhoods I represent for years. It's absolutely phenomenal way of meeting your neighbors, and I think it's a great, great thing, and you guys probably should take a look at that. Thank you.
All right. That completes the public comment. There is no executive session, so there being no further business before the body, we are adjourned.